I'm gonna do it after roll call.
Sorry. Okay. A little bit in fog.
Roll call.
Counselperson Ford.
Here.
Counselperson LaForte.
Here.
Counselperson Taha.
Here.
Counselperson Betcher.
Here.
Counselperson Coyer. Counselperson. Sorry.
Keenan.
Right, Keenan. No, you're fine. I'm just in a fog. I'm sorry. I apologize. And Mayor Gibson.
Here.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Becky Coyer.
One second.
We have a motion to excuse counsel Coyer and second it. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The approval of the agenda.
I make a motion of the approval of the agenda.
I'll support.
We have a motion to approve the agenda and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Public comments on the agenda items? Correspondence? None? Presentation. We have Mr. Rizdella on the audit.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank all the council for being here. I assume that we want to get this out of the way, so I'll try and be brief. Make a few comments. Won't make you read all the wonderful numbers again. Great effort by Sean and Bob was a great help to get it done by December thirty first. That's your due date for filing with the state. You know, from a practical standpoint, is the audit important? And well, I don't want to, you know, toot our own horn, our profession. You're required by the state, so you don't have much choice on that. So getting it filed timely means that you're not going to have a deficiency out there, potential that the state withhold your money. You know, there's some disastrous things if you're late on the report. So we took care of that compared to where we were last year. Again, transition in and some of the issues, problems that we had were simply that, you know, lack of personnel or whatever reason, not pointing any figures, but you know, we had to clean up the record. So again, took a little bit longer than what normally would be required or what your expectation is. As council members, I mean, you should have an expectation of when you think the audit should be done. You're in June. I mean, from a practical standpoint, we have to wait for certain information to flow in for a couple of months after you're in to verify those numbers. Usually it's settlement from the county, what your revenues are from the state. So at the earliest, you know, you're looking at probably mid-August, at the very earliest, you could ever get the audit done. The longer we let it go, the more accurate the numbers become because anything that we find subsequent to your end, you know, we know that number is right, particularly on money that you receive in. That being said, from a council standpoint, I'm not sure if anybody has really gone through the numbers. Well, I know he has because he gave me all kinds of questions and I figure Brian's probably looked at a couple of things. Any surprises where you were and where you're at? That's, that I think to me is your biggest danger that you have is that throughout the year, you were relying on certain numbers that you thought the city had recorded and our adjustments were pretty significant to those numbers. So forget about the, you know, state requirements for the audit and everything, just from a standpoint of adapting your budget, making cuts, all the, you know, hard decisions that council has to do. Having financial information that's, you know, a little more accurate is probably important to you. I shouldn't say probably, it is important to you, particularly from the budgeting standpoint. But where you were from, you know, the initial preliminary numbers to the final numbers, as I said, we made some adjustments, some significant adjustments, but really didn't affect the bottom line a whole lot because there are a lot of things that were either recorded incorrectly or not recorded ins and outs. So the net effect like on your SAW grant, no effect there. A lot of money coming in, a lot of money going out, but that wasn't really even recorded. So hopefully you look at the numbers now, particularly between what your adopted budget was and what the actual is. Use it as a tool to move forward and see where you're going to be headed in the near future. So a couple of pages I'll go through with you and go over a couple of things. Again, I don't want you to read all sixty-five pages and I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on regurgitating numbers that you can read, but if you have any questions, feel free to let me know. At the back of the report are some findings. Most of those are repeat findings from prior year. So again, the major findings are, you know, the financial statements not being accurate that the auditor had adjustments. Again, when we come in, we're supposed to audit your numbers, not fix them. And that's been a, that's been a dilemma. Bob understood that process and was gracious enough to, you know, give us the help that we needed to clean up the end, your end numbers that made, you know, us able to complete the audit in a timely manner. Maybe not real timely for council, but at least should be happy that the state won't be on your backboard. Couple of pages. Page nineteen is your recap of your governmental funds. So it kind of gives you a snapshot of where major local streets are in the general fund. Third number from the bottom has your net income, lack of a better term, change in net position. So kind of surprising to me is that the general fund ended with a surplus. Pass off to you, you know.
Careful. I think I know why. That's not a good reason. It's temporary, but...
Well, and Brian had a great concern last year about where that ended up falling over the last year, so...
Just a question on that. You know, the governmental activities, changing the fund balance, it was a negative hundred seventy-six thousand on page eleven.
Yep. Part of what I want to talk about today, so we can.
Yep.
Okay. Well, page eleven is the government-wide statement. So that throws everything in. Your government-wide shows depreciation on your government activities as if the general fund had the building. So those two statements at the beginning of the financial statements are not the same as your fund statements. Different presentation as far as what fund balance is versus net position. And it's kind of, so there are some things recorded in your government-wide, such as your pension liability, that doesn't show up in your fund statements. As far as your interim information that you get, you usually don't have any of that recorded anywhere. You know, that's something that we record as far as some of those other liabilities and assets that you have. So you don't have any assets reported such as City Hall, you know, what the cost to City Hall was or appreciation related to it or things like that. So your working tools that you normally look at are the fund statements rather than the government-wide.
Well, I was looking at page ten too on the bottom of that last sentence. Total unrestricted net position. Part of the net position can be used to finance day-to-day operations without constraints or establish debt covenants, legislation, other premises approximately two hundred sixty-nine thousand. In arrears or dipped into our reserves by that amount, it's how that means. Over the past fiscal year. We had to dip into our unrestricted reserves to cover that debt of two hundred sixty-nine thousand.
Again, government-wide though, so those numbers are coming from your government-wide. Those numbers are reflected on page fifteen.
And Brian, you have to be careful because a lot of those buckets that number's coming from has depreciation on their non-cash values. Would I sort out and pull the depreciation out of current year, we overspend a hundred and ten, and I'll circle back to that before we're done. That's the number we need to look at as far as changing things.
That's what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah, it's the one ten. I've got to sort back two and three years to make sure I've got depreciation out. But with current year being out, you're averaging a hundred thousand a year for three years overspending. So this is part of what we need to talk about. There'll be more at the next couple, three meetings to talk about that. We've got to make changes, but obviously we've lost five or six employees. We have to refill at least two of those. I've got to have a treasurer and I've got to have a clerk and I've got to have a DPW. And we've got to have a DPW that can run a backhoe. So we'll circle back to that. I can't say enough about Dave and Don and all the work and Brian and the mayor as well because we've been burning midnight oil here through the holidays. Getting things done so we could be here today. And again, Don and Dave and the mayor and Brian, thank you because there was a lot to be done to be compliant today.
So, you know, Gatsby sixty-eight, thirty-four, those are the pronouncements that made some big changes to your presentation on the government-wide. But again, if you want to look at it from a fund statement, page nineteen is a little bit easier to understand and that's kind of where your financial statements are driven from. On page twenty-two is your water and sewer. Similar, that water and sewer does include depreciation in it. So net position on water and sewer, sorry, page twenty-three, shows the bottom line as far as where you ended up for the year in those two funds. And remember that you do have depreciation included in there. So water fund has thirty thousand dollars of depreciation. Ended the year with a forty-seven thousand dollar loss. So you're still upside down on it. Sewer fund looks great with a surplus of five hundred and thirty-one, but remember SAW grant money is in there. So all the SAW grant, five hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars is included as revenue. Again, a little bit misleading that you're in great financial shape in the sewer fund only because you got the grant dollars that came in. But overall, in probably a little bit better situation than you were. Page forty-three is your budget to actual. That's where you might want to, you know, tweak your current year budget, compare where you are currently as far as your actual numbers and what you originally budgeted and need to amend and go ahead and amend it. One thing that Don was always aware of is amendments to your budget because you're not supposed to be spending any money that you don't appropriate and you don't budget for. So one of the good things is that even though the actual numbers were off, your budget was somewhat in line with what your actual expenditures were and no significant deficiencies in your budget. That's another thing that the state is always looking for, a comment that we have to make, a question we have to answer as far as your budgeting process and whether or not you're significantly over on any of your budgeted items. They look at the general fund in great detail on that. And if you look at page forty-three, you see that a lot of your expenses are over budgeted. So doesn't mean that they were necessarily real accurate at one time, but the budget came out pretty good.
Yeah. No, the big reason why we're in a surplus in that area is the intergovernmental other, that two hundred twenty-seven thousand. Is that part of the SAW grant?
No, that's some of your other, well, some of the money came in as your Indian grants, but that was in and and out because it went to the ambulance. So ambulance is kind of overstated as far as an expenditure. But it's your, it's your money. It has to come through the city and then you pass it along, so you recognize it as revenue. But you're right. Yep, that's the biggest difference is in that category of where some additional money came in. State also is...
Are those one-time?
Yes.
So you can't count on that revenue, so if you reverse that out, you're still in deficit position.
Correct.
Yes. So if I may, this would be a good point for me to interject. One of the main points I need to cover with council today and the mayor and Don and the auditors, I've already heard this, but if you look down on page forty-three, because this is the cat in the bag sheet right here, see that minus one oh seven oh sixty-three down in bottom left corner? We need to do a year-end budget focused in June every year, okay? And I know enough to lead us through it. With some help, we're going to get it done, but we have to make adjustments in June. We're going to need a meeting in last week. It needs to become a regular meeting. I don't know if you realize it, but today's a special. We can only vote on the six things here. I get the excused absence and that. It's all good. That's housekeeping, go to the meeting, but we can't vote. But in June, we need that to be a regular meeting because we're going to have things to talk about. We may have to make motions that day to fix something before it gets turned into the state. So we'll be revised with the schedule. And I know you guys voted for six o'clock, but I'm going to tell you five fifteen is the right time, so I'm going to have you ponder that and vote at the DUCs for a meeting on that issue. I can't add it today and I didn't really want to cloudy with the money. I'm sorry to step in, but this is one of the huge deficiencies that we need to fix. There were three deficiencies in last year's audit that we collectively fixed the last few weeks. These guys were over budget when I got here and I know we spent some money, but we've made the legal requirement. The Act fifty-one deficiency is gone. The F sixty-five is going in if it's not already.
It is done.
And from now on, the auditors will take care of the online filing, which is also one of the gigs. So those three went away. It's going to take some time to undo what time is done here, but I suspect working together as a group, we're going to see progress, because significant progress during twenty-twenty. So I'm looking forward to that. But I can't say enough about Don and Dave in particular. I know somebody was in here Friday working late and doing stuff over the weekend to help keep me and Dave and other things moving. So Dave and Don and the leadership of the board, thank you. We did get this done. It is cleaner than it would have been if we hadn't worked so hard on it the last couple of weeks, but we have to move to higher ground. So I'm going to tell you, we're going to pull the plug and drain some stuff. We're going to ask you guys to get involved, help clean up town later. May and June, we need to get in our parks. There's lots we need to do for now we get back to the audit. But this year-end thing is huge. It's a lot of work, but it needs to be done and I will lead us through that in June. I think we'll start in May, but it'll get done here in June. And would you not agree that's part of it, getting control of our office, the BS today and getting our bank recs and stuff done before we get to him is going to save us a lot of money. We'll circle back to that the next couple of meetings.
And Brian, you've been, you've been on point with the budget. Just to follow up with, he said, you may find this a little strange and a little odd. He's right. It should be done in June. Some municipalities do it after June because then they know what their final numbers are and go and amend it afterwards. Legally, you can't do that.
Technically, we make the amendments before we close the year because we are not supposed to be spending money that you haven't authorized. So this hundred thousand, we'll be going through those financial reports. Those have to be fixed in time to do this, right? The financial reports, so BS today trainings, something else we're going to talk about. But we're going to get to a better place. And I guess if this is my starting point, there's lots of room for...
That's why it's important to know what those actual numbers are as close to the end of June as you can get because if you're going to amend the budget, you know, and you have bad numbers that are sitting in your financial statements and you base it on that and then make an amendment, well, those numbers may not be accurate as far as what you're trying to amend to. And it's a, yeah, that's a great, great comment. And unfortunately, a lot of forethought that you have to put into making those final budget amendments, but...
Expect our first swing, we'll get eighty percent of that hundred thousand next time and after that it should run clean every year.
Well, no, you're fine. And I was just saying that, you know, this year we did that, you know. I had the time this year that I brought all those budget amendments to council and you voted on them in June so that we were ready for this.
Just a, just a reminder also, remember that your budget, revenues and expenses don't have to equal. So you can budget a portion of your fund balance. Your concern, I shouldn't, I shouldn't be picking on you, just you, Brian, but you gave me a lot of questions on this, is not, you know, you can spend some of your fund balance, but as you know, you know, at a hundred thousand dollars a year, city's going to be broken no time at all. So those are the tough situations, tough answers that you have to come up with and you're going to have to do it by, you know, June sometime. But in between now and then, you know, if you can get things cleaned up, I think it'll give you a little bit better picture of what you truly have to adjust rather than, you know, oops, we, we missed this or, you know, that number's not included in some of your current financial information right now.
It'll also help going forward to in our next budgeting for the next fiscal year to know what we got to do.
It is going to be tough because I'm saying ninety days before I finish my arms around it. I understand the audit, where you were six months ago, but I don't know where you are today and I don't know where you're going to be in May until we get into these reports. And I got to say again, thank you, Don and Dave and Amy and the mayor and some others. We're on the right track. I would be sending them off and I got to get, and we'll get into some of that, but training's got to get fixed on the staff side. So within my spending limits, I'm going to have to make some of those moves. We've got to do BS and A to get to the financials. We need to do what we can here before we go back to these guys. The pay difference is big and we need to do more of that here. So we're on the right track. Just telling you, there's a lot of work ahead of us to get to higher ground, but we're paddling already.
Yeah, you'd have some great contacts out there, you know, I can share this, that there's other, a lot of other municipalities, of course, that use BS and A. Reach out to them. There's a lot of treasurers that will help you.
I've got ten years with it. We have the right software. We need to have better tools, in-house tools. And that's comes through training.
Some of the things that we've, you know, that we're trying to get you to clean up and straighten around is that your initial setup is wrong. And that's...
It is.
Not to point any fingers, some of that is on BS and A. You know, their software is designed for the city of Detroit or the city of Pin County. It'll handle either one, but their default is city of Detroit. You don't need all the bells and whistles on everything that they have out there. Sometimes it's more complicated to fix it because of the way that they initially set it up. But I think that you're coming along pretty well on it. You know, certainly the, the integration that you've had with the utility billing and the tax billing has been a great improvement from a few years ago. So, yeah, the software, there's no, I don't have any complaint with the software. I agree with you. You know, it's very popular with municipalities.
Yeah, we'll do what we needed to do because I've been using it for ten years. It will, we'll get there. And then again, Dave, you busted your neck the last few weeks helping us get to this point today. I did want to mention quickly before we move on, please take those home and look at them. Please come back to me with any questions you might have. But if you get all said and done, you really don't need the books. We'll take whatever you don't want back in the box. Certain grant applications are going to require books. And as we get more leaning that way to try and get our dollars with other dollars, get things done, it would be handy to have a few. So if you get to the point you don't need it anymore, turn it in to me or the office. It will set half of those of those aside and in the future, we'll probably ask for a couple extra copies when they come. So between what you give back and what he's got, we got six. That's probably enough extras.
If you guys want electronic copies, which is running that they got, you always want one. I can send anybody an electronic copy of it too.
You can send me a final when you're done. We'll file it here sometime.
And again, all the reports, everything that, that you have as far as what's required to be filed by Treasury is available online too. So you can go online and get the audit report. You can get the audit procedures report, the local unit fiscal report, Act fifty-one report and the qualifying statement. So all those reports are things that we're going, make sure that they're filed by tomorrow. Once you give me the okay, the audit report will go in. Can't do the qualifying statement until Treasury receives the audit report. And that will be done tomorrow.
Audit today, letter tomorrow, everything's just barely in the wire, but we're good there.
But everything is, is good. As long as we get it in by tomorrow, you're all set then. So I didn't have any other comments on any numbers unless you have lots of questions, as always, you know. Glad you gave me homework. If you guys take it home and do your homework and you have questions, you can always call me and I won't bill you for it.
Yeah, I, I have one. And I think we need to talk about the sixteen thousand dollars in bond equity that's in the report. It says we're underfunded, but I see two old water and sewer bonds and two new water and sewer bonds. Somewhere in your notes, it says we're underfunded by sixteen thousand. And as I understand bonds, your first last payment goes in when you start, I'm guessing, or miss the last payments in two or three of those accounts.
Your bond payments are okay. It's a repair and reserve and we've had some issues with this. Don had Rural Development come in and the lady from Rural Development went through and she couldn't provide us with final documents that were signed. So we were under the impression of what, what some of the documents that we had. So the underfunding that you have, let me step back.
Had.
Had.
I know now it's been fixed.
So you're correct as far as the bond payments. So your bond payments, and this is unfortunate with Rural Development when you have financing with them, your first or your last bond payment from the funds have to be set aside. So you have sixteen thousand and something else on the other fund, right, Don?
Actually, on the two bond payments, we have one that's at Independent Bank in the amount of thirty-six thousand dollars. That is there for the two thousand two listation. And then at the credit union, we have the final payment for both ninety-six and two thousand two in the amount of a hundred and fifty-five thousand.
Yeah, so you're, you're funded at the max. Over time, you're, you're funded at the max, so you're all good on that. What you're deficient on is that in addition to the bond payments to pay the debt, they required you to have a repair and reserve account. So if something broke, you have money to fix the station. That's what Rural Development is saying that you're sure of.
And, and when I, when I was brought in back as manager, whatever, and sat down with rural water because this was something I was never a part of, the city manager clerk always met with on that. And that is when I was notified about the RRI account and we've now put that in place as I shared with you last year. I took, because we actually had more than what we needed in those two accounts, so I drew the interest off of both of those. And then that BR, that base rate that's on your water bills, which amounts to twenty-six thousand, I believe, a year, is what we're putting into that RRI to get us up to that proper funding. So, I mean, I could only correct it as soon as I was made aware of it. And so that's where we're standing.
And, and the Don's defense is that Rural Development wasn't real clear on what goes in there. Once you fund it, you can also take and spend the money out of there for major improvements. They missed some of those. So we reached out to them saying, hey, we put the money in here, but yes, we also had to take it out because you had major repairs that went into the system. So realize that this money just sits out there, puts kind of a strain on your cash flow because you're not supposed to touch it. Well, if you can convince them that you've had repairs that are part of that repair and reserve account, that, that balance will come down of what they're requiring you to set aside in cash. It's, really puts a strain on your cash flow by just having to have money set there and not be able to use it.
And it's hugely important to me that we keep that relationship and those funding requirements correct because when we talk about trying to do something at the park or we try and talk about doing something at City Hall, Rural Development, USDA is going to be a huge partner on a lot of those projects, including anything else we might want to do around the parks. So I, again, Don and Dave, we've been busy and we've been scrambling. A lot of this stuff's been moved around and put in place. I think it just goes back to somebody getting overloaded with twenty-seven things coming at once down there.
Yeah, that's a great pickup on your part. They are fairly happy because you've had your bond reserve amounts fully funded for a long time. It's that repair account that's, and, and I'm not sure that, you know, I can only argue with them as far as what we've had in the past as far as using some of that and they, they don't have that information. So they've inflated that number saying you got to have a lot more in there.
We'll work with them and keep it straight. But given what's in here and the lack of money that's available, USDA and, and EDC and MCOG are all going to become partners of ours that will be working off a project list that we're going to be working on. I know that a couple of you have given me some feedback on that already. But yeah, we've got to keep it clean with them because they're going to become a partner with us on community projects financially.
I rambled on long enough. Any other questions?
I think the other issue that I spoke about is the unfunded pension liabilities, you know, to address that. You know, still where I'm looking at the assumptions are assumptions of eight percent and getting to that figure of a little over a million dollars in unfunded liabilities. But that's eight percent, seven percent. I think seven percent's probably more realistic. With that eight percent, seven percent, I think seven percent's probably more realistic, uh, return in fund itself.
Formula seems broken. I think the state's applied the numbers, eight percent is too high. I think you and I had talked on this briefly in the last week. You've got about fifteen people drawing MERS check and you got about five people paying in. I'd be real leery about giving more MERS deals than anybody. And two, we've gotta look at it. Three, I think there's gonna be some pressure at some point at the state level for this to change. The market's been producing good interest rates.
So one, what a couple of our municipalities have, have done, and this is only recently approved for this year, is that they've gone out and bonded for that money because they're paying in at a rate that the state has calculated at whatever, typically six, seven percent, and they can bond for money and get it at two percent. The risk of that is, you know, you're committed and then you send all that bond proceeds over to pay down your pension liability. It's a, it's a gamble that you have out there. And there's no, there's no reason to fund it, right? I mean, there's no requirement to fund it.
But the, the, the liability still there, it's gonna get worse with the five people paying in, you know, got sixteen.
Or, it's suggested cut back to your balance.
We have to do more MERS deals until we have equity there.
Yep.
Um, and that's why we've got some other things the next several months. We're gonna look at morale and retention and cost cutting savings without offering those big expensive packages. So I think we're on the right track with that. And this is all due to the state. I haven't touched much of it, and being out of full-time service for a little over a year, it's moved ahead. So as I read our audit, I was learning and asking a few questions, but I said to the mayor and the mayor, and I think to Dawn, boy, it says made out liability. We gotta stay away from MERS. This is gonna kill us if we don't. We really can't have ten more retirees on MERS in the next ten years that we've heard.
This isn't, this isn't unique to the city of Pinconning. I mean, everyone has this. When that pronouncement came out, we had to throw this huge liability and record it on the financial statements. And there's no offset for it, so across the country, just not Michigan, you know, the accounting pronouncements made all governmental activities look a lot worse. That was pushed by, um, the financing companies out there, particularly the bonding agencies that wanted to know, you know, what your liability is and make you on the same playing field as far as financial disclosure to some of the for-profit entities. The, uh, the for-profit entities came about that long, long ago, but they went through the same thing. When General Motors first recognized their pension liability, yeah, they were like, oh my goodness.
So here's what the other communities are doing. Part of what I'll be sharing is best practices. So in best practices, a lot of the communities have gone to a defined contribution plan with MERS, which is much cheaper and easier to manage. They don't really know what kind of monthly check they're gonna get at the end, but the city knows how much money every year is going in. That's one. Four fifty-seven is probably another one where they're saying, we're gonna work with you to put money into an annuity, but the MERS thing's gone forever. This is way too much hokey pokey math and logic and finances that it's too hard to figure out. We need to paddle away for MERS and we need to not make any more of those commitments right away. We've gotta get this. But again, like depreciation buying, it's a number, but it's, it's kinda hanging out there. It's, yeah, there's some cash to it, but it's, to some extent, feels like depreciation. That's not all real.
Still, basically, we have fifteen, sixteen.
Yeah, according to the state formula.
And another five that are eligible for it, so we have twenty-one.
Yeah, it's gonna be a challenge.
That's gonna draw, but.
I don't have answers yet, but it's certainly something we're all gonna have to work on. And as the chair of the committee, you and I will be spending extra time on that, I'm sure.
Well, and that is something that is council and, and Bob are gonna have to do when it comes to union negotiation, because again, when Avon and I came on, you know, we chose not to do the MERS. Avon and I paid into a four fifty-seven with council doing the contribution, again, to get away from that. And we can do that with the administrative staff that's non-union, but right now you don't have a choice with your union staff. That is part of that contract.
Yeah, we can't take it away if they're at it. We can prevent other people from getting in it. And that's what I'm saying. We need to stop with MERS, let new people in. Cause it's, that number's gotta get bigger as these other five retire.
And you also need to be careful, cause I know when we sat down and talked with MERS, that, you know, if we stop contributing altogether.
That's even worse.
Right. They're gonna call that no do, and you're not gonna have that money.
Yeah.
Well, you get to that sixty percent, isn't that the trigger anyway? Liability to liability to actually the actual value of what's in front.
Um, enforcement on that is out the window because there's this lovely place, you know, in southeast Michigan, city of Detroit. Just says, well, we can't afford it, so they don't make the contribution, so.
I know that a lot went through last year and they probably should have told the state they could come and review everything, so.
Yep.
But we have worked towards trying to minimize.
Yeah, and there'd be a lot more changes.
Kinda refreshing to hear from him, you know, that's an opinion that I, as your auditor, I can't, I can't tell you to look at that or do that. It's not always popular. Particularly with your retirees, it's not gonna be popular, but, you know, from a dollars and cents standpoint, thank you very much. Something you should consider. I agree, wholeheartedly.
Can I ask this? I, I know, uh, regular union pensions or whatever, if they're really underfunded and struggling, the government steps in and takes over, and whatever their monthly monetary figure should have been, they lose, they lose two-thirds of it and they end up with about one-third.
As a union group, they voted belong to that union group, and they voted to belong to that pension. That has nothing to do with us. That's their hard lock. That's their hard lock.
What I'm asking, if this MERS is that underfunded, can they step in and do that here, or is that something?
Well, I'll give you my political two cents, which I don't like to give you my political opinion on it, but the two big pensions in state, the school districts and all the municipalities and there's a breakout for the colleges and universities. The governor, um, kind of cut, mandatorily cut school district pensions, so new employees are not under a defined benefit anymore. Most of those are under a defined contribution. The state has also given schools additional money to fund that unfunded liability. There's a hope that some of that money is going to come from municipalities, and some of your funding for that may, may not come. I mean, the state knows it's a problem for most municipalities. And how are, how are you gonna correct it? Who knows? You know, one of the hot topics now is to go out and bond for it and hope that you're paying less in dollars for the bonding, fund it, and then have the taxpayers pay it off as, as a millage amount. It's kind of a, that's, that's the new hot item out there. There's not very many municipalities that have done it. As of, as of June thirtieth, there were only about ten in the state municipalities that had bonded for the money.
I don't have any other questions.
I mean, yeah, I just got a couple things, uh, you know, on page fifty-two, just wanna make council aware, you know, that, uh, multiple grants, I assume, in the casino. Casino, uh, processes on an annual basis, or something else in there, but possibly, you know, we, we still, through our budget process, are pretty dependent on, on the, the casino grants coming through to subsidize the general fund.
Yeah, and keep, keep in mind that, that's a little misleading, even that one line, because some of the money that came in went to, as I said, went to the ambulance too. So it's shown in here as revenue, and then, yeah, then, then it goes out.
And state revenue sharing is there as a grant. I don't know if that's a grant, but that's kind of the bucket it's in. Uh, but that is part of our tax revenue. That is replacement for probably personal. Some of that. But anyways, that's not really a grant we write for. That's things we do to stay eligible to get there. But that revenue sharing is a good part of that line, Brian. You see that?
The other item that's on there is the stabilization money, so that's, again, probably gonna go away or go down. So they gave you your normal state revenue sharing, which is not increased in a long time, but this year they did give you stabilization dollars, um, kind of a, a windfall.
Stabilization dollars are from personal property taxes?
Partially, yes, yeah.
Not being paid.
Because of lost revenue. You know, again, I don't wanna
So they will be.
I don't wanna interpret why, why the legislature gives you money for, cause they have their own opinion on, you know, what they're trying to replace. Your overall dollars are definitely going down that you're getting, but, you know, they'll throw you a bone every so often because of additional things that.
You can't count on the bone.
Uh, right. And I think you know that, so.
And on, uh, page fifty-six, just the unallocated, uh, tracking benefits on retirements are, that is pointing out that those are expenses that eight, two thousand unallocated that hasn't been targeted to a particular line item or department.
Right, and I think we talked about this when you were asking about the budget from, strictly in the general fund standpoint. And again, one of the setups that you need in BSNA, so if you're going budget, um, salaries and wages to police or DPDW, all the fringes related to those wages should correspond with. No, you're not recording it that way. It's all going into one bucket.
So that needs to be fixed too.
Yep.
Which we've been talking about for a couple of years.
Right. I think it gives you a truer picture on a department by department basis of what that cost is.
Correct, that's where you need to be.
And Brian, in all honesty,
For permitting purposes.
In all honesty, that looks like an April twenty twenty-one project for Bob. I don't see that getting done by this April. Cause we have asset mapping and other things.
You need to make cuts or adjust services. You gotta know what you're spending, your true, 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 true costs.
And it's dealing with our providers and getting broke down, cause now they do insurance rates, health insurance rates based on you and your husband or your wife and the age of your children. So you used to be, you were married and had two kids. I had a sheet and I could tell you what, the blue cross rates were. Not anymore, far. Not anymore. Uh, but yeah, that does need to be separated, Brian, and I, I know budget's gonna be a challenge, but that's a lot of things we're gonna work on.
Just last, lastly, your notes from page sixty, page sixty-one, is your recommendations, uh, pretty well noted. Uh, there were actually repeats of last period, so you only saw, been involved in. And, um, you know, causes, that is for the records, uh, there really was not, there was no turnover, you know, staff this, this, this year. There might have been understaffing, but not turnover.
Well, yeah.
Which, which caused the effect that you're talking about, but, uh, the turnover wasn't there, so that's kind of a mistake in my, the way I read it.
Yeah, my, my interpretation of that, or why I threw it in there, is that there was a period of time where Dawn was not in any position. She wasn't even employed. So that little bit of time that she wasn't here.
In this fiscal year, she was.
In this.
In this fiscal year, yes, I was here the whole time.
Okay.
And that's all I have. I don't have any other things.
Anybody else have anything to, to Chris Della? Well, I, I, I don't know where to start, whether up here or there, over there, but I just personally, and I wanna speak for the city of Pinconning. Can't say enough for the help Mr. Guizdella has done with his staff and their firm to accomplish this audit. It was short time, short frame. A lot of kudos to their firm for taking care of the city and getting us this audit by the end of the year for Dawn.
Burning the midnight oil.
I, I don't know if the rest of the council knows how much time that you two guys have helped me do, so hopefully they're aware of that. So all my questions went to Dawn, to Bob, to Gerald, and to Brian, you know, as a team effort to get a lot of things done. So again, thank you for your resources.
With thanking them, I personally wanna thank Councilman Saha. He's been a big asset in the finance department for this city. He's been on top of it. He's been keeping council aware and informed, so I appreciate what you do on the financial. Now, over here, we have Dawn. Again, did her job in a short notice, trying to work with Dave, getting him, and honestly, they worked long hours, overtime, overtime, whatever, to get this accomplished. So kudos to you, Dawn, for the effort and getting back, uh, Dave the information he needed out of time frame. And then we got Mr. Moffett. Mr. Moffett stepped in. And as soon as he was hired, so called for the city, Mr. Moffett took charge and started moving us in the right direction. He's worked many, many hours, I know, coordinating with Dave, coordinating with Dawn, coordinating with me, coordinating with Brian. There was many hours put into this, and just for the city, I wanna thank you all for the cooperation and getting this audit done in time, so we can file it by tomorrow end of year. So thank you all.
Yes, thank you.
My council, thank you. Anything else on the audit presentation? All right. Um, I don't know at this time, Dave, if you wanna leave.
I mean, don't worry. Go ahead.
More than glad to have you here.
I know, like this.
Uh, new business, whoops.
I'm sorry, Mr. Moffett.
I just thought if you guys wanna take the audit submission, right, we need to receive it, approve it, and authorize them to submit it. Then, then we cut Dave loose. He hasn't been one of the guys burning the midnight oil here on this roundtable last.
We make the motion to, uh, receive it, approve it, and submit it. The current auto fiscal year end, June thirtieth of two thousand nineteen, from the city of Pinconning. Recognize it and submit it through our CPA.
No support.
And city.
They got support.
Okay.
If we wanna do a roll call on this, please.
We have a motion to approve the audit submission, received it, approve it, and submit it. And we have a second on it, any discussion. With no in discussion, we'll have a roll call for.
Councilperson Kenny?
Yes.
Councilperson Vacher?
Yes.
Councilperson Saha?
Yes.
Councilperson Lepore?
Yes.
Councilperson Ford?
Yes.
Mayor Gibson?
Yes.
And then, of course, councilperson Porter's answer.
Thank you, Dave. We're all set. If you need anything, at all, reach out. You've got cell numbers for us and email, so, thank you, sir.
Motion was carried. Back in order. Uh, new business, the approval of closing the office on Fridays. This is gonna be a trial period for six months, starting January first to January thirtieth of twenty twenty.
June.
June thirty.
June twenty, twen- June thirtieth, twenty twenty.
This is recommendation of, you know, administration.
Right here, yes. It's retention, it's morale, it's cost savings. If there's a hundred thousand dollars we need to deal with, there's probably three or four thousand in savings. But we also, if I just, you have a job description for me that says I'm at City Hall from the time you open and close five days. That's forty-five hours a week. On the week with council meetings, I'm looking at forty-eight. Let them look at eight hours in the car going, okay. It's fifty-six hours on a normal council week, and it's fifty-four hours on a non-council week, and people are leaving. And people are leaving. Well, I think we need to try to, to get us close to a forty-hour week. There's lots of catching up that needs to be done in the office. There's grants, there's year-end resolutions, there's lots of other work that needs to be done. Take the old stereotype of the manager being here all day long, he's gotta change. I can't get work done in the community if I'm here all the time. So what I'm asking you is to close the office on Fridays from January first to June thirtieth as a trial period, to save money, to help with morale, and help this office catch up in the back. To think about it, we're doing water bills, we're doing tax bills, and we're helping with the meetings. Generally, on a normal day, before I officially start, you have two people in here, and if somebody's got an appointment or somebody's sick, you really don't even have enough to be open. So I'm saying, let's focus on having four good days, let's work on keeping the people that we have in their seats, let's work together to make things better, and let's try this for six months. I think this needs to happen, so I'll, even though I'm the trainee here.
I have a question, um, which I'm all for, um, what happens like if a, a billing period, like for the water bill or taxes, or do you want a Friday? Are you gonna push them out to the next business day?
We, we will move them to that following Monday, and that is the one exception that it came to my mind right away. I'm glad you picked that up, because that may affect the billing cycle, and if it does, we'll give them the extra two or three days.
Only because I know people, if they're paying in cash, aren't gonna wanna drop it in the lock, be in the box outside.
Do we necessarily want them to, but if they have to, I'd rather they put it in an envelope, probably take it shut.
Yeah, that's, that was my concern.
Yeah, but yeah, we would add about three days of billing cycle, right, fell on that long, on that Friday.
And there may be days that were mandated Friday's day for the luxury or tax.
Yeah, there'll be times we'll be open, there'll be times we'll be in here working, there'll be times we'll be out in the community working, and there'll be times I'll be working on projects.
Yeah, I, I just thought with billing, if it, and, and the Friday.
Yeah, and, uh, so we'll make those adjustments, we will.
Good question. I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the closing on the office on Friday through that period of January first through June thirtieth as a trial run.
No support.
We have a motion of closing the office on Fridays from January first to June thirtieth, twenty twenty, as a trial period, and seconded it. Uh, any further discussion?
Will there be an emergency contact number or something?
And, and just in case council doesn't know, there's always an emergency contact posted on the window, so even weekends after hours, if someone wants to come here. Or days that were closed, there's always been an emergency number posted, so that we're available twenty-four seven.
And during this transition time, I believe everybody has her number, everybody has my number, right? You don't have my number?
Mm-mm.
Okay, I, you wanna write it down? I'll just speak it up, uh, nine eight nine, four two nine, zero one two seven.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem, anytime. Need something?
Any more discussion?
Nope.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item B, the appointment of Bob Moffett as street administrator, effective January fifteenth of twenty twenty.
That's gonna be hard to write down, twenty twenty.
Do. Just discussion there, do you want it earlier than that, or?
No, these, all these appointments for me should be January fifteenth, so that we're not leaving things on the floor. I think in a previous transition, you had positions open, and this was all intended to not do that. To put me in certain places, and we're gonna talk about filling clerk and treasurer too, so.
So we could combine all these appointments in one motion?
Yes, you could.
The B, C, D, and E?
Yep.
Yes.
January fifteenth, twenty twenty.
Okay, then, I'll read them all. The first one I did, street administrator, appoint of Bob Moffett as zoning administrator. Appoint of Bob Moffett as superintendent of public safety, appoint of Bob Moffett as superintendent of public works.
I'll make a motion to, uh, appoint, uh, Moffett. To the street administrators, administrator superintendent of public safety, superintendent public career professor, January fifteen, of two thousand twenty.
I took care of, find you done.
I got it, I got it.
Okay. We have a motion to appoint Mr. Moffett as street administrator, zoning administrator, superintendent of public safety, superintendent of public works. And with a second, any further discussion?
So, I.
Effective January fifteenth?
Effective January fifteenth, I would say that. I got it, we're good.
So this won't be an overload?
Um, the only one I've not had is superintendent of public safety, but I'll figure that out. I assume that has to do with police and fire, so. I've been involved with those, you have a fire authority, so I'm used to that. I've had a small police department for the last eighteen years, I'm used to that. I've been in situations in Gladwin twelve years ago, well, guess what, three years, we're a hundred thousand over. Although I found it out before I signed the contract, and asked the mayor at the time, you gotta put a raise in my contract, cause I think I'm gonna ask for a pay freeze for everyone giving you money. Uh, but it worked out, and we'll work through this. This is hard, and there's lots here, that's more than just the audit to deal with, but we'll get through it. I need you guys to work together and support us, and we'll just keep moving. But no, this isn't overload. What I don't want is fifty projects. We're gonna work on four or five from staff, and six or seven from council, that'll be our come and go for the year, and some of them will be in parks.
And do you?
Money.
Do you have a plan then for, um, public safety is, that's part with the internet that's been an issue, or no?
With the what?
Internet.
Social media?
Yeah.
We've had some discussion, and I know Brian wants to talk about that at the next meeting. Um, the bottom line is, we overspent a hundred and ten this year, and I don't know exactly where it came from, but some way, somehow, we have to find little pieces to move, but then we probably need to find a big piece to move, so. Things are gonna change, and it's not all gonna be easy, but we're gonna move in a direction that we're working together, and we're working as an employee group together, and as a council together, and we're all working better with the community, so. Those are the kind of the short-term goals here, but we've gotta get this figured out, this BSNA thing, we gotta get that figured out, so we get a year-end resolution. I'd really love to see us have a nice clean audit next year, and we got a lot of work to do to get there, so, and it'll probably be a couple, but I think we improve every year, move in the right direction.
Any other further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, let's move into next, okay?
Okay, yeah, posting of the clerk's position and updating.
I guess, I don't wanna take anything out of order here, but about five weeks have been over here. I guess it's been about five weeks since Brian called me. Let me go back to that. Brian called and said something about would I be interested in coming over helping. Dawn was gonna leave, and you needed somebody by the fifteenth, and within. I don't know, we played phone tag for about a week on different things, and finally it was, he had a resume, but he wanted a new one, he wanted salary and all that, so we could. Together. Anyways, we got moving, and it wasn't very long, probably that same day I was sitting here with Dawn and began to realize that. The city had a lot of issues, a lot of issues, DPW, police, budget, money, internal controls, people quitting. Audit wasn't ready to be finished, just a lot, but it didn't take too long to realize that we had some people that really loved this community. And I'm gonna say Brian, and the mayor, and Dawn are top of that list. Well, it didn't take too long to figure out, I can't do this job without her sitting next to me. We will make a great team. How she became treasurer, I don't know. How she became manager, I don't know, but she has everything we need to be a good clerk. She also has everything we need to keep this office going, and keep the payroll running, and the water bills running, and help me with AP till we get a treasurer on board here. I need her to sit next to me, and today she's agreed to stay on as our clerk, so my motion would, my request would be for a motion, keep Dawn on as our clerk. To leave her at her seat, to leave her here to help me, and we move forward together. I gotta tell you, folks, this feels like you're about two years from receivership, and I don't even wanna say it out loud, but I gotta tell you, that's what I'm thinking. If I could keep her next to me, and I can keep you guys next to me, I think we could pull the employee boat together, and I think we could pull the community boat together. I'm telling you, I need Dawn to sit next to me. She's agreed to be our clerk. She's also agreed to go to the QBF training, cause we have a March election, and she's got five years as a treasurer, as clerk. If you want me to print your water bills, and you want me to sit at the counter and do that, I'll learn how to do that, that's what I'll do. But as your manager, I'd like to be fixing this stuff and work with her, work with staff, work with council, and move the stuff ahead. Leave her at her clerk's seat, give her a few of those like she used to do as the manager, then I've got enough that I'm not overloaded if I can keep her next to me. So my request is we keep Dawn in the chair as clerk. Leave the pay alone, cause she's gonna be working as hard as she ever has. Um, and I will be looking to find us a two or three-day week treasurer, probably retired CPA, MBA, we've got somebody with management experience, I'm finding out today, who was interested a couple of years ago, who might. If I can keep her at her seat, bring a treasurer in, we're off to a good start. So that's my request. I'm working with Brian, we wanna get this treasury thing advertised. I don't know the process there, about the interviews, and how you guys have done that, but we'll figure that out here in the next week, so we keep that moving. So again, I'm recommending to council we keep Dawn on as clerk, and we find us a part-time treasurer and keep things moving.
I think that's a fabulous idea.
She's well experienced, isn't she?
I need her, and you need her, whether you realize it or not, and I'm grateful she's sitting here with me today, and I'll be even more grateful in a couple of weeks when we come back. I don't wanna take minutes during these meetings. I wanna be involved in the conversation and helping you guys make good decisions. But as clerks, you'll be in here, and when I'm sitting next to her, and I can tap into Brian and some of you, this will all get better. And again, no quick fixes, no hocus pocus, and no hard work, and we'll all need to get involved, and we will, and I'll be asking you guys help with things. Need motion?
I make a motion to have Dawn Holder as our clerk for the city of Pinconny.
No support. Welcome back, Dawn.
She hadn't left yet, I'm gonna go.
We have a motion for Dawn Holder to be our city clerk, and seconded. Any further discussion?
Just a discussion on the, from the budget standpoint, it all fits in.
It's gonna fit, the BSNA, once the BSNA is done, I'm probably gonna come back for her and Amy both to get a statement, a little adjustment there, because they're both doing huge, huge things the last few weeks here. She's learning our water billing, she's learning some payroll, she's learning a lot of the other office stuff, so I can't say that about the people around me. This just kinda puts us in a good place to get started together. I'm hoping by spring, we could actually put the budget, the election, the asset mapping behind us, and get out in our parks and our neighborhoods and start doing some work.
From the, uh, budgetary standpoint, I know Dawn had a combined position.
She, she did.
If you want to.
Yeah, let me, let me speak to it, cause there's no need to wait until January. We can vote on some of these things, but we have to balance our budget, we have to get to the point where we're living within our means year to year. And you got three years to say you're not doing that. So yeah, there'll be some tough decisions. And you're gonna end up probably squeezing me on my time, and I'm gonna let you, cause again, you guys called me out of retirement to come help you, I don't have to have forty hours, I don't have to have a check here at all. So it's already been, and I think it was the mayor and Dawn that I shared this with, I'm your highest paid employee, and if you got weeks in February and March and April, but you only need me thirty hours a week, that's all I'm gonna work. There's no need for me to be here open to close, and there's no need, because you want me at community events, is what you're saying in the job description, you want me involved in stuff. And again, it's gonna be a team effort. There're gonna be times that Larsian Ann goes, or there'll be times that the mayor goes, or Dawn goes, that I can't, and there'll be other times that I'll go when they can't, but we just all need to work together. Part of that whole thing is, as a city manager, we put a lot of those resources out there for you. There's barricades, there's DPW, there's water turned on, there's heat turned on, there's police, there're different things that we're doing. So even though we may not be serving soup on Saturday, we probably have twenty hours of getting you, so you could. So I just want you to understand that. I've asked Brian at some point, we need to look at that, because that's not a realistic job description for me. But as their boss, I have to make sure they have the training they need, the tools they need, the resources, they have the support they need to carry out the things. So my one concern here is that I don't get overloaded, so that I can't be effective, but I'll speak up for myself a little more about that. Um, but that means, what if you was in charge of the parks, Larsy, right, you're in charge, so there are some things that you're gonna be, um, that you haven't done in the past, and what you've done, you and I are gonna sit and polish that, and we're gonna come back here together and ask for helpers or money. So you guys get more involved down the road, look at down the road. I'd love y'all to be block captains, and I'd love to put a dumpster out in your driveway or next to your house and give you a week to help me fill it. I just, we've got issues, folks, and we can't do it.
Oh, yeah, I understand.
Two of us by ourselves, so I'm just kinda lining out some of those things, Brian, where I think we're going with some of that.
I understand that, I'm.
So Brian wants to know what lines we're gonna take my salary from, so as usual, I mean, you're gonna expect the clerk line, but as it is now, and we talked, you know, when we did the budget with Gary, and. And, and, and things, and Dave, and things like that, so that clerk salary is drawn from the clerk's line, we're looking at major and local streets, because again, that person has to track. The DPW's time and the street work and that, so there's some of that wrapped up into the administration costs, and then there's still time for that water and sewer, the clerk has to oversee, things like that. So basically, those five line items is where that's all divvied up to. Is that what you were thinking at the time?
Yeah, I was trying to get the rate of pay where, where, where you're at.
And the treasurer will be at part-time, so that's where part of that's gonna come from, and then we're gonna squeeze Bob's hours, and I would be honest, the police hours are probably gonna have to get squeezed too. So we'll be working on that plan, and I'll have something to you. By the time we have budget done, I should have a better idea, so that we get some of these recommendations done and, and worked out. But we're gonna have to squeeze them, and I'm willing to let you squeeze me as part of that, because we need this to work. Yeah.
Everybody's gonna be squeezing.
Yeah, we're gonna squeeze up anywhere we can a little bit, and we're gonna look for opportunities. I know, um, Brian and I have had some good conversations about some pilots. Right, we got some people who wanna redevelop or fix up some places that are here, we got somebody else who wants to bring us to do places. I have enough experience to steer us through that, make sure when it's all said and done, they're paying for water, it's their extensions, the road extensions, when it's all said and done, we got a little extra money. Gotta have a little extra money from time to time to keep up with everything else and maintain the staffing we need, so that's all part of what we're gonna be paying attention to, cutting the expenses and trying to increase the revenue. We were looking at some city property today, they're all frontage in front of the park that might make sense for one of those housing developments, cause we'd sell the land and. Put an annual something into the kitty to help keep things moving ahead, so some of these things, in particular, where maybe we sold five acres and had a revenue stream off that waste, that that would make sense, and that would fix some things in the short term. Or put some of that money back that we spent recently.
Okay. There was a motion on the floor for Dawn to stay as the city clerk. And was seconded. That need to be a roll call, or just?
I think, I think we're trying to admit this to the.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Yes.
I, opposed? I'm gonna, you kinda touched on it, but I'm gonna separate it to G, uh, the posting of the treasurer.
Yeah, just a bar of clarification on anything, right, I'm a. I think you gotta end up, you gotta hang it on me. I'm sorry, you gotta hang that shingle on me today, but no, we gotta find somebody, and we gotta get somebody in here right away. Does that make sense? I'm gonna be your treasurer, we're gonna try and have some direction for you in a couple of weeks at the next meeting, we need to get out. That's my understanding from talking to the mayor, you guys have already authorized posting of the treasurer position, so if we work with the league, and I run a couple Saturdays in Bay City and Midland, which I think is a little better plan than past practice. We'll just go ahead and do that. I know Brian's got four job descriptions, so I'll catch up with him Friday or next week, get that shored up. Get that shirt up. I'll go ahead and work with Dawn, and we'll go ahead and get those ads out for treasurer. I did have some conversation with somebody last week who's got about five years of BSNA and treasury experience. I will know in about a month if that person would be available, and maybe interested in coming to work, and so. I'll keep that moving, and we'll go ahead and get the advertising done, and try and get that shirt up right away. And as we made her clerk understand, there's election coming and some training, so I've gotta go ahead and pull the trigger and work with her, and get her off to school right away. We may ask her, and I think Monday the sixth, Dawn will be in training at the courthouse, and I think we've got campaigns here here. We're gonna ask her if she might go to that training on the sixth.
Can we have one too?
If you would.
Uh, I can't.
You can't. The county clerk gave us permission for you to go with Dawn.
I, I, I have a, uh, report doctor, please.
Okay. So QBF's coming, BSNA's coming. I'll keep you guys apprised of that. That's stuff we gotta have to kinda catch the boat.
Was, you gonna touch on Amy, a position?
Well, it's not on the agenda, but I think we're, go ahead. You talked to her, didn't you?
I, I spoke with Amy, um, it was like. Bob said, sorry, my head's cold. Like Bob said, it's not on the agenda. It'll probably be on the regular scheduled meeting. We asked Amy if she would be willing to take on the position of deputy clerk, or I'm sorry, deputy treasurer, my bad. And at this point, she needs a little time, but she is thinking that would not be an issue. It just makes sense. She's already doing a lot of those things. She's doing the utility billing with me. She's not full on her own, but she's got most of that down. She's been doing the tax distribution with me overlooking it, and she's been entering the payables for us monthly, so I mean, she's already doing a lot of those duties.
Doing a lot of this. You need help with something? You need help with something? I can't be more happy about that. It's a good place to be. So it makes sense, and we'll put that on the agenda and firm that up with her and talk about that next time. But at least we've got a clerk and treasurer in seat during this transition period between the meetings, so. Then it'll go well at this point.
So, do I have a motion to place Bob Moffett as, uh, the treasurer at this point?
I, I, I guess, what are your thoughts? I would say interim, so that we know that it's a short term.
Probably interim treasurer would probably be the right motion, 'cause if you get, it's a job I can't do, and she did more than most people could do. I'm a trained manager, I'm not a trained treasurer, but I will take the title, 'cause we don't want it laying out there broken for somebody to kick it and say, hey, you don't have, so you don't get. So I think this is more preventative medicine, but I'm willing to take it on, but we've gotta get somebody found.
So I'll make a motion to elect Bob Moffett as our interim, um, treasurer. I'll support.
We have a motion to make Bob Moffett the interim treasurer with a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. It's, it's not on the agenda, but I just want to thank Dawn. Because at our January meeting, she will be in place as our city manager. I just.
Don't make us all cry.
Thank you, Dawn.
Thank you, Dawn.
You've done a lot of great things, and we really appreciate everything you've done for the city.
Yeah. Any public comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, you approved that, uh, Dawn's gonna be the new clerk, but there wasn't a wage set, I, I didn't hear anybody.
I said leave the wages alone. She's got a wage number. I did say that.
Yeah.
That is what they agreed to, to leave her wages alone.
So she's gonna get the same as what she was as mayor?
As manager, yes, and I said she will be busier than she's ever been helping me, and I'm so glad she's staying on the team. I don't know what I'd do without this young lady next to me, or these people. I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for these people, and I couldn't do it without her. You'll see, we'll make a good team, and good things will come. And I think we've all learned from each other in the past that things have to be different, and I think that's the goal, and as long as that's the goal, that is, I'm the right guy here. I believe that. I believe that with my whole heart.
So as the citizens, though, they, they should know what, what, what is being paid though.
Me, or her?
No, what Dawn is gonna be paid, that's what.
She's been here forever.
But it's gotta be, well, you voted on something to, to do, to, it's like a new position.
Yes.
For her as being clerk, and I think that that should be public information, what she can be paid.
I don't know the number.
Five penny.
That number is twenty-four oh four.
I didn't know the pennies. I knew it was.
Is it, is it public, is it public, Greg?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's.
I mean, right now, this is new. While she was paid as city manager.
He knew what she was making.
And as, uh, treasurer, she had different positions, right, all to add into?
She got one paycheck.
I realize.
She had one position, she got paid one amount for all of those jobs, all ten, twelve, seventeen, whatever it was.
Twenty, probably fifty, whatever.
I, I don't see why it's such a hard thing to say that the.
No, the amount, the amount is twenty-four dollars and four cents.
I didn't think that was a hard thing to ask, I mean, I'm sorry.
It, it's not.
Sorry, I interrupted everybody.
No, I'm glad you asked, because there's a reason why I think that's the right number. She's gonna end up helping train the new treasurer, she's gonna end up helping train a deputy clerk, she's gonna end up helping deputy treasurer. She's already doing water bills, she's already doing payroll, she's already doing AP.
All they asked is what the pay was, that's all I asked. I didn't think that was a big thing. I thought, as a public part, I thought it should be well-known out there what, what the pay is. And yes, I mean, you can say it's already been the other way, but it should be well-known that, you know, that's what it is. That's all I'm asking. I don't think that's much they asked.
It's not.
Everybody can look at your, your own thing, what you think, but I mean, I thought it was a simple question.
Sorry, didn't mean to get carried out, but she's worth every penny to me.
Any other public comment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn our meeting.
I'll support that motion.
We have a motion to adjourn and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Adjourn.
So our January meeting's by fifteenth?
No, we.
No, six P M.
You said for six o'clock. I'll have a revise agenda, though.
You're the clerk now, okay, so we're, okay.
Six.
I was waiting to, um, I'm gonna be here for a little. Monday I have, um, my service, I have both, I'm in for six, so what I'm just saying.